Okay, I'm thinking we're hour and a half or so. Hello, Bill.
Okay, cool, alright, okay. How about if we start since at six, how about if we start with number two? If you're okay with that? And Bill's at Bethany at nine. He'll get here and he can do that proclamation. I don't have much for item number two. You okay with that?
Yeah, we're gonna start. Are we ready, Dave?
We've even got a city attorney here.
They got seersucker pants?
And a quorum now. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and start.
With a new style, I see.
I thought that was Colonel Sanders coming in here.
Since you give her fruit, we're coming in the same.
I know. Alright, I'd like to.
You go to college more often, everybody's one of both kinds.
Alright, even though we're at work session, I'd like to ask the Sons of the American Resolution to lead us in a pledge.
To the left of the face. Alright, please. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken. Tonight, there are five items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed to, public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into our city clerk's staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Will the city, is there any public comment cards?
No, sir.
Will the city clerk please send the agenda item? I'd like to start with item number two.
Discussion of City of Milton Strategic Planning Staff Overview Vision and Mission Strategies, presented by Chris Lagerblum, City Manager.
We'll start with this one tonight because it's relatively short. You know, we have placeholders on work session agendas as we work through this plan to bring items to the council's attention as we need to provide updates. If this one hadn't have been advertised for this particular meeting, I probably wouldn't have put it on this agenda, but I'll give you a quick update as to where we are. Since the last update, what we have really started to do is to work on what the facilitators, Frank and Allison, are calling the parallel review process, meaning we're going out to the community and soliciting feedback on where we are with respect to having put the plan together, whether we're on track, off track, need to change directions. You'll have a very thorough and complete update during your main meeting. I can tell you that last week, we met with the Equestrian Stakeholder Committee. This week, we have two meetings with city staff as a stakeholder group. Next week, we have meeting with HOA presidents that Councilmember Longoria has offered to host at Crooked Creek. Invitations have gone out to over 150 HOA presidents in Milton. We have a general meeting here next week for the community at large to come Thursday at seven o'clock, seven to eight fifteen. So right now, we're really just kind of in a mass, parallel process, parallel involvement process, many opportunities for feedback all across the city of Milton. We're trying to bring it into the community as much as we're asking people to come here. And that's really where it is. We spent four hours dealing with core values as well as working on strategies, strategic action items, and key service measures this morning. So, the plan is moving along well. Frank and Allison are good to work with. We're taking it, you know, in the process that they find works, and at this point, that's where we are, is to take it to the community and then the next stop will be y'all. There's still plenty of opportunity for feedback into it. It's not as though the trains left the station by any stretch of the imagination, so if y'all will just work with us here, we'll have a more thorough update at the next work session and you'll have a thorough update from members of our strategic plan, too. And I will likely stop being the talking head for that, except to the extent that they need me, but there's members of the community who would love to address you, who've put a lot of work into this plan, and we want everybody to have an opportunity who's worked on it to take some ownership of the deliverable in presenting it to you, so. Having said that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have as it relates to the strategic plan. Very, very, very short update this month, anticipate a longer update at the main meeting because all of the parallel process items will be complete by then.
Have you met with any of our committees like the Planning Commission or the Parks and Rec Committee to get input from any of them? Because I know they're feeling a little bit left out because I've gotten comments, "How are y'all doing a strategic plan and not talking with us?"
Well, certainly, we, you know, would be very interested in hearing what they have to say. I don't know that necessarily a stop through their committee is something that we had planned at this point, but there's plenty of opportunity for us to hear feedback. If we need to stop by the Planning Commission at one of their meetings, we can certainly.
Well, that and the Parks Committee. My concern is the fact that they almost feel like this is a whole other committee that's going around them and they're afraid of what, you know, what, everybody's trying to set direction for the city and you got all these different groups setting different directions. How is it all gonna come together so we really know what direction the city is going?
We can certainly take it to them for feedback at this point. I don't, I don't know that necessarily it has to stop and get approved by them.
No, I don't know. It doesn't need to stop and get approved by them, but I just feel like if they could get some impact, input into it, then, you know, I think their concern is, you know, are they wasting their time because there's a whole other committee that's setting the direction?
Fair enough, fair enough.
I would just say that I would concur with Councilmember Thurman, and again, it's not that it has to be a stop to approve, but I do think to ensure that there's not either redundancy or potential, conflict's not the right word, but different perspectives about strategy, you know, just when we had the presentation the last time, I think, being able to identify the need for Lou Oliver to provide some input strategically. And I think to Karen's point, not only Parks and Rec, obviously Planning Commission, and I think CPAC meets again this week, and it'd be a perfect opportunity, just if nothing else, just to have some open dialogue and make sure that nobody feels disenfranchised or that there's not some thinking that's occurring in those groups that maybe somehow hasn't made its way to the strategic group. I guess I think it's a very valid point, that we could, we could miss some real opportunity for collaboration.
Okay. Okay, any males?
Thank you, Joe. And on a related note, I'm not opposed to running things past the Planning Commission, but I also think this kind of raises a related issue that we don't necessarily have to go into tonight, but it may be time to revisit the purpose and scope of the various committees, especially the Planning Commission and some of the others, because it wasn't my impression that the purpose and scope of that committee was to plan or, I mean, even though their name says Planning Commission, I don't think the purpose of that committee is to plan the city or to drive its strategic direction. Maybe it is, but that's something we need to talk about because that's not what I was aware of.
Fair enough, yeah, and the Planning Commission largely resides in the zoning code.
Right.
That's where they're, and I can tell you that what has come out of the strategic plan to this point doesn't really address the zone, I mean, it's more of a three-year vision for the city than addressing the zoning code of Milton. So, that's not to say that those folks don't have some valuable input, and certainly I would look for them to provide input, and, you know, they, like anybody else, have likely been invited to the, to the public meetings that we've scheduled, but, you know, it's real easy to go, we're getting good at rolling out what we've got at this point and asking for feedback, so we can do that as many times as we need to.
It just seems though that if we, if we always share things and always run things through certain committees, then there's an expectation that that's what should be done. And I think we need to manage expectations wherever possible.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay.
Alright, Bill, I stalled so we could come back to your number one.
Yeah, definitely could, we could go back to agenda item number one, city.
Patriot's Day proclamation presented to the Sons of the American Revolution. This is presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
So proclamation, this is for Patriots' Day. Whereas April 19th, 1775 is a momentous date in the founding of our nation, once celebrated with other patriotic holidays, and whereas, in the early hours of that day, Paul Revere, William Dawes, and Dr. Samuel Prescott raced through the Massachusetts countryside warning fellow citizens, British troops were coming to arrest their leaders and seize their stores of munitions. And whereas, answering this alarm, patriots took up arms, congregated on the Village Green in Lexington, and during a confrontation with the British troops, several patriots were killed, thus marking the beginning of the war for American independence. And whereas, on that same day, determined patriots lay in wait for the advancing British troops at Concord's North Bridge, and during the intense fighting, they repulsed the British, who then began their retreat to Boston with the patriots harassing them all the way. And whereas, news of the shot heard round the world galvanized public opinion in favor of the American Revolution, including reluctant Georgians, and whereas, it is appropriate that we recognize the importance of this day in our history and remember the sacrifices endured by many patriots during the years of struggle for American independence. And whereas, Milton County honored John Milton, a Georgia Continental officer whom the British captured at Fort MacIntosh in 1777 and imprisoned at St. Augustine. During the British capture of Savannah in 1778, Milton saved Georgia's public records by taking them to the Carolinas and later to Maryland. He returned the records following the re-establishment of Georgia's government in 1782. Milton County became a part of Fulton County in 1931. And whereas, the City of Milton is named for John Milton and is within the county once named for him. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 19th, 2011, as Patriots' Day and encourage our citizens to honor the many patriots for whom Georgia counties and towns are named, and pay tribute to all the patriots of the American Revolution given under his hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this 18th day of April, 2011.
Joe's gonna add some color to us here. Julie and I are just brown, sad.
Thank y'all for coming, appreciate y'all coming.
Alright, will the city clerk please send the next item?
Our next item is discussion of RZ 11-03, to amend chapter 64, Article 7, Division 5, State Route 9 Overlay District. First presentation was on April 11th, 2011, presented by Lynn Tolly.
Sorry, reach me, short. Alright, this presentation is for text amendments to add to, well, actually, let me back, to update the Highway 9 Overlay District and add to it. These come as a result of the recommendations of the Highway 9 Committee in putting together those design guidelines that you all have approved, as well as joint work session with the Planning Commission and the Highway 9 Committee, and then approval by the Planning Commission. The text amendments include changes to access, encouraging internal access and rear service drives, so that they're joined together. They include building placement. Basically, what we have changed here are the, kind of giving actually a maximum setback for buildings of a certain size, that we get more buildings closer to the road, understanding that there will be on Highway 9, some much larger buildings that will need to still have some somewhat significant parking in the front, but that the majority of the buildings are closer to the road. It addresses parking and paving such that newly developed streets should have on-street parking as well as onsite parking being located to the side of buildings, kind of related to the building placement guidelines. And it revises those parking standards to require new developments or redevelopments to reduce the amount of impervious paving surfaces, so. It addresses stormwater management facilities, requiring those to be located in the least conspicuous areas of the site, as well as to try to encourage them to create a more natural look than your typical detention pond. It provides a lot of pictures, you'll see a lot of pictures in this portion of zoning ordinance, showing particularly screening and fencing, specific types of fencing that would be approved, as well as street furniture and lighting. So we'd be looking at what are shown are specific brands, but similar brands with the same look would also be approved, so. It also addresses architecture, including updating the color palette for the Highway 9 Overlay to include some of the other colors that we've looked at in this area, so that we're not just looking at browns, browns and creams and browns. So we've got some additional color variation in there. One of the things that was included originally was an amenities section, which required some amenities for those developments that were 75,000 square feet or more. At this point, the Planning Commission felt like that needed some more definition as to what those amenities are and could be and how they're defined, decided, and required. So we're gonna look at that a little more deeply and bring that back to you at a later date. And finally, it includes the addition of the Deerfield Overlay into the Highway 9 District, and some of you may know that this is something that the Highway 9 Committee has been encouraging as well as Commissioner here, Mr. Tarr. And it's something that is needed in order to kind of give kind of a practical reference to, a practical regulation to what's out here already. We have the majority of the Deerfield area being developed in a way that really is non-conforming with our current Highway 9 Overlay, and so this really takes those covenants from the existing Deerfield area and the Property Owners Association and applies those that we can to the Deerfield area in our codes and our regulations. So, I think we will still, in fact, I'm sure we will continue to get support for those things that are not included but are within the covenants of that Property Owners Association, for anything that's built, that's new as well, but this, like I said, allows for things to be rebuilt, some additions to happen without having to go through the variance process. So, it should be an amenity to the Deerfield Overlay. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I know that's very broad, I know there are a lot of pages here. Let me just dive into asking if there are any questions and where I can start.
Any questions? Julie?
And I don't know what your preference is, Lynn, if you want to go through within each sections. I guess I'll just dive in based on your question. As an example, when I look at Deerfield versus the Highway 9 Overlay, and you and I talked about this briefly, I think, after our last meeting, is that there were some, I'll use the term discrepancies, I realize that they were developed differently, but Deerfield as an example requires a five-inch caliper tree. The Highway 9 documentation here talks about a three-inch caliper tree and in some cases only a two-inch. I would just suggest that we want to try to improve the whole of the area, and so if Deerfield felt that that was important, maybe we need to look to that for consistency. And I would suggest that also, given the presentation that we've heard from Mr. Oliver, when we think about crabapple, you know, part of the, kind of the retrofit for crabapples to look at also going back and trying to find an opportunity for things like larger street scape trees. So I just think that maybe we could look for some consistency in that area. I know you mentioned that the amenities section is gonna get some additional detail. As you look at that, I might suggest that we consider a required percentage of green space. I didn't see anything to that effect. I know in some of the other overlays, we don't just say we'd like to have some, but we require a percentage of green space. And I think that's particularly important, really throughout Milton, but in particular on the Highway 9 area where we have tended historically, unfortunately, not to have dedicated green space. As it relates to storm drain, again, I would just ask if, based on some of the details that we've gotten out of our crabapple assessment, if there's not some enhanced approaches for storm management that we could incorporate here? I know that the movements should try to move away from above ground and this allows that still, but I wonder if we could encourage it a bit more strongly and/or provide some evidence, not evidence, provide some of the examples that we're now seeing that we're wanting to implement in other areas. I just think that if we've got that good data, that we owe it to the Highway 9 area to incorporate that as well here.
Okay.
Another section I just had a question about was the insertion of the word exposed in front of the word neon lighting.
Yes.
I don't know that I could distinguish between exposed and non-exposed neon lighting.
If you can see it, it's exposed.
Yeah, I just thought that was an, and then the other was within the foot candles. I'm assuming that that comes from our night sky.
It does.
It wasn't true.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, just a few places, and this is the editor in us, and I know that actually Bill and Alan are usually the best at this, in some of our sections, just the design review board should be a proper noun, or a proper noun, so those should be capitalized in a couple of places.
You know, that's funny, we had that same discussion with the Planning Commission, and when we talk to MUNI Code, they tend to take all the capitalization out of those boards as well as all of our titles.
Interesting.
So, I don't know why that is, we can make the change, but they're gonna pull it out again.
It surely not, it's.
Must be a lawyer thing, I don't know.
It's not substantive, I just bring it up since we're looking at it. And then also, under parking location 64-1096, just, the notes to myself were about pervious versus non-pervious surfaces, and I know that when we, you know, in other areas, when we look at parking, we're trying to encourage obviously a higher percentage of pervious versus the non-pervious, and again, given some of the nuances of what we're potentially looking to in crabapple, if we can incorporate some of that and bring it over, I think that would be helpful. And then, recycling, I'd like to see us have a required approach for recycling with our new development, even on Highway 9, and I think we've talked about this within our, some of our other ordinances, that we want to have some places that are available for folks to proactively recycle, including the commercial facilities, and right now, we don't really require that. So instead of just having a waste area, that there would be an external area where it was separate from the waste, so that you would encourage that recycling.
No, let me be sure that I understand. You're not talking about a public, kind of small drop-off facility, you're talking about simply for the businesses themselves?
Just so that we have that opportunity to incorporate it upfront. we want to have some places that are available for folks to proactively recycle, including the commercial facilities. And right now, we don't really require that. So instead of just having a waste area, that there would be an external area where it was separate from the waste, so that you would encourage that recycling.
No, let me be sure that I understand. You're not talking about a public, kind of small drop-off facility, you're talking about simply for the businesses themselves?
Just so that we have that opportunity to incorporate it upfront. And another global question was, I know that this really deals with just non-residential, and I wondered if we wouldn't want to consider overlay approaches for the residential as well, whether that be, you know, townhomes detached, non-detached. And I think in some of our other overlays, we've dealt with that with mixed use, have we not?
As a mixed, as a mixed-use project, yes. Single-family detached has not been included in any of our other overlays.
Does this still apply to the mixed use?
It would.
So townhomes?
Townhomes, if they're detached, which, you know, they're typically not, but if they are detached, then we would not review those. But if they're attached, we would.
And I guess that's where part of my question would be, is that again, because this Highway 9 area, you know, we, I think we've got an opportunity to try to jump in now, and I think we continue to hear from citizens that that's a desire. So I would just ask that we, obviously as a council, but also with staff, consider whether or not some of those residential areas might be something that we would want to have a look and feel kind of standard.
Are you talking about the part that faces Highway 9, or are you talking about the interior of?
The part that would be, the part that would be visual.
Oh, okay.
Because it's something that impacts the whole of the area. And I know that in the past, we've heard from a lot of folks that have historically been involved in the Highway 9 area, that that's something that tends to be overlooked. Because, you know, it's one thing when you have, I think we have a lot of folks that say that there's not been a lot of design standards for the commercial, but similarly, you oftentimes hear them say that as well, especially for some of the higher-density developments that come in.
Well, the habitat for humanity development is a perfect example.
Well, or, you know, there may be some others as well, but.
Because I remember, you know, that was a plan that was approved under Fulton County, but there was a lot of discussion with citizens after the fact, that were like, okay, can't you just put brick facing Highway 9? Can't you just do this? Can't you just do that? And you can't, after it's been approved.
And so, Joe, to your point, is really thinking about how it impacts the visual for the whole area, you know, when you think about that design facing Highway 9, or other main roadways?
Yep. I guess my question is, not so much the, like, the facing part of the attached housing unit, whatever it happens to be. You're talking about the common component, so like either the fence that's on Highway 9, or maybe an amenity building, or something like that, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, but also the structure itself. I mean, a lot of times, at least in other overlays, it, you know, we hear from citizens that a development will go in, I don't want to use the term substandard, but that they, we've heard that sometimes the structures that go in don't have a 360-degree kind of view, or that the materials that are being used may not be what they were hoping for for the area. And so there are some overlays that deal, and I know we talk about it in mixed use, but I just think that sometimes we miss the opportunity to have some development standards in terms of the way those structures look. And again, I'll just point back to, you know, the whole discussion in crabapple, is that whether it's commercial and/or residential, it's how do you want, how do you want an area to evolve over time? You know, whether it's generational or not. And I just think we have an opportunity here to at least consider, do we only want to look at non-residential, or do we want to also think about, and when I say "we," I mean staff, or the design review board, or, you know, just setting up those kinds of standards? So just as a discussion point.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand, I mean, because we wouldn't want everything to look the same.
Absolutely not. But you can have, with an architectural design standard, you can have, you know, a whole host of approaches. It's that you might want to just preclude certain things that citizens would find prohibitive or not, I mean, just like the Deerfield area, they've got design standards. And so as a result, whether it was residential or non-residential, I think that there was a goal to have things be pleasing to the eye. And so that.
Yeah, I guess the problem I have is that's, pleasing to the eye is subjective.
It is subjective.
I mean, how on earth do you put in a set of rules to make sure that structures are going to be pleasing to the eye?
Well, I think one is an example, do you want concrete that's just concrete? Most people would say probably not. Would you want, you know, wooden brick? I mean, I think it's not to say it has to be this, but it's to say, here are some things that meet the development standards.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to get into a big debate on this, Julie.
No, that's okay.
I guess my point is that when, I'm trying to understand how we instruct staff to try to incorporate this kind of stuff in what they're doing, because when we make statements like, "We want to highly encourage it," I mean, to me.
That doesn't mean anything.
It doesn't mean anything.
I would agree. And that's why I'm suggesting that in this document, we need to do more than just highly encourage. But if we really believe that Highway 9 is deserving of better development standards, I personally believe that we need to consider commercial as well as non-residential and mixed use, and I think that we have missed the boat too often by excluding the residential component, because we hear from citizens day in and day out, they don't want to see Highway 9 develop only as commercial. And I think we're fortunate, I mean, as an example, we've got some other folks that are coming in to present some residential approaches, but when we don't have development standards, we're leaving it to chance that what's going to come before us meets kind of the expectations of our citizenry. And so to your point, is there just one way that it could look great? No. But are there some things that would probably be pretty obvious that would look pretty bad? I think yes. And I think if you were to talk to citizens, they could probably articulate the things that would look really bad, and they could probably give you some examples of things that would be helpful to the Highway 9 area. And probably our committee, you know, if you just applied some of those same standards from commercial, and translated those to the residential piece, I think there would be consistency. But, you know, that's for you guys to contemplate. Let me ask it this way, is it fair to say that there are overlays, whether they be in Milton or other places, that address a non-residential and a residential approach for architectural standards and development standards?
Sure. Historic districts do it all the time. It's a matter, it's really a policy decision as to whether or not, you know, you want to apply this to a single-family detached home.
And maybe there's certain ways to describe that as an example. Is it mixed, if it's in a mixed-use area, if it's detached and/or attached? So I think you said that right now, it's mixed use, but only if it's attached.
Right.
And I think sometimes we're increasingly seeing some mixed-use development that has detached townhomes or detached residences. And I think it would be a shame to miss the opportunity to have development standards simply because a building is detached or attached. If the development standards matter for commercial and for mixed use, they should matter to the whole development.
Okay.
I think. I mean, if we want it to look good, wouldn't we want it to all look good?
Well, again.
And it's not what I think looks good, it's the fact that, from an architectural perspective, there's some pretty standard language out there that talks about what's appropriate.
Yeah, and certainly I'd like to see what we can come up with to try to, you know, capture that on paper, I guess. But, you know, those kinds of suggestions and decisions, I mean, have got pretty big impact to not only the people that would buy homes or would buy commercial property, but the people that own the property now, because it impacts their ability to sell, it impacts a lot of things if all of a sudden we raise a standard above and beyond what's available anywhere else. And not that that's necessarily a bad thing, I'm just saying we need to think about that kind of thing.
Let me, as we move forward with this discussion, you know, before we start talking about changing and making a lot of changes to this, I kind of want to get a general feel from the council, and if this is something that we want to change and make a lot of changes to, we probably need to pull it from our next agenda and work on it some. So as the rest of the council, anybody, you know, are there council members that are okay with it as it's listed, or everybody want to make some changes on it?
Well, we had a committee set up to do this. Is this something they looked at, or, I mean, if they didn't feel like it was necessary, I sure hate for us to go back and say, well, we don't like what you did, we got to.
That's not what I.
I don't think they addressed it.
I just don't think they brought it up.
I think their charge was to look at the existing overlay and determine if there's, how it could be beefed up, basically. And the existing overlay didn't address residential, so they didn't even go there.
Right. I don't think they spent, I mean, the question was asked, does this apply? But I don't know that they spent a lot of time debating as to whether or not it should.
And I'd like to just clarify, I'm not suggesting that we change a lot, I'm suggesting that we address whether or not we want it to also apply to residential. And I think we need some consistency with our trees, and I think that we would be remiss if we didn't lever what we just spent $30,000 on, in terms of getting some good input about architectural standards from Lou. And if we say that the whole study matters to us, I think the whole study should matter to us, including the Highway 9 area. That's all. It's not gutting this, it's not significantly changing it, it's making sure that if we're learning someplace else, that we pull that in. And right now, I think there was just a timing differential where some of the data that came out of maybe some additional work that we're looking at for crabapple, doesn't have to be the same, but that we could throw that into this, without significantly changing it, just making sure that we make it the best it can be.
Well, let's talk about the points that Julie brought up, and then go through the rest of the council, if there are some other points, and we can discuss if we'd like to do that, and, you know, we can work forward with that on this.
And I think that's the point of a work session.
Yeah, so what, your first, your first point.
Let's just go home, we're done.
Your first point was, had to do with non-residential?
Yes, just whether or not you'd want to have the Highway 9 overlay considered, as an example, in mixed use, do you want it to only be attached residential in a mixed use, or should it be within mixed use, detached or attached? And then beyond the mixed use, are there any instances when you would want to consider residential within the overlay? Based on some definitions.
Do you have any to put on that?
Really? This is really and truly a policy decision, beyond kind of, particularly if you go beyond the immediate frontage on Highway 9, that is totally a policy decision. You know, I could see maybe requiring some design standards for those things that face Highway 9, but again, this is a question of how deeply do we want to get into each individual's homeowner's design? Because they will have to go to the designer.
I'd like to clarify, I'm talking about along Highway 9. I'm not saying the entire Highway 9 area. Talking about major arteries where if you don't have some sort of requirement, we end up with, with things that this whole committee has been focused on trying to do, is to try to improve the look of the Highway 9 area.
I mean, I agree.
So you're talking about a portion of this purple area, you're not talking about the whole.
Correct. I'm talking about those areas where you have frontage, that it gives the look and feel of an area. If we want it just to look like Roswell Road and Sandy Springs, let's do nothing. If we'd like to do what we say we're going to do, which is to make Highway 9 look better, we need to consider the detail, because the devil's in the detail. And right now, this covers nothing having to do with residential.
Right. So do we have an example in another overlay in Milton where residential is addressed?
Well, in crabapple in mixed use, it covers residential, but I don't know if the word "attached" and "detached" has been handled, because I intend to ask the same question with regards to crabapple. Because if you're in a mixed-use area, you know, it's just that the business model might change day to day, or week to week, year to year, and Bill and Joe can speak to that. You know, what's good in one market might suddenly shift, and people no longer want to have an attached dwelling, but they're small and close, they just don't touch. I think that it'd be silly.
And I guess that's, that's the whole reason, I think, putting in standards for residential is a sort of stepping over a line.
I think, if I remember correctly, crabapple covers non-single-family residential, but I do not believe it covers single-family. Now, it might, but.
And I'm not, again, I don't have that answer.
We're also lucky with crabapple, and the developers have chosen, in most cases, if not all of the cases in crabapple, to make the residential consistent with the look and feel of the area. In Highway 9, that's not the case.
And some of that, though, that was done at the time individual zonings came forward, restrictions were put on there, and, you know, it was all site plan specific, and it was based on certain things. So, you know, that gives you a little bit of flexibility when things come before you, so you're not having every house in Milton look just alike, so.
And I, guys, I am not suggesting that we have design standards for every single house. I was simply saying, in the Highway 9 area, on the main roads, where it faces and gives a look for the area and/or main roadways, we'd have to say what those roadways were, that we consider within mixed use, that if it's something other than attached, we still might want to have a design standard.
I guess my question is, are we talking about residential in this overlay district? Design standards for residential?
Right now, it includes nothing. It only talks about non-residential.
Well, I guess my question, and where's the residential left in this overlay?
Well, I think the people that live near Highway 9 hope that some of it, well, we've got a rezoning coming to us shortly that's for 43 townhomes. So that would be an example, and it wouldn't apply to those 43, but I think, and guys, this, I'm not quite sure why this is seeming to be contradictory.
Are we talking about something that's so infinitesimally small here that?
I don't.
It's going to.
You know, the main thing, I want, how do we define? What do you want to define? Are we saying, I know you said Highway 9, but also roads that.
As an example, is it, like Webber, wherever, to Bill's point, if you were to look at the map and look at where do you have parcels and have it yet developed, if you look as an example at our future land use plan, the future land use plan, I don't have it in front of me, has identified areas that are for O&amp;I, for commercial, and that also for residential, near Crooked Creek and near Bethany Bend. I think there's folks that live out there that are really hoping it's not all commercial and office. I think there are folks that are hoping some of those parcels develop residentially. And so I would say that you'd look at those parcels that are on the main roads and say, okay, are those parcels in our future land use plan identified for detached or attached or mixed-use residential? And if so, it seems logical that we want to have some, even if it's basic standards, because that's consistent with the message that we want to increase the look and the feel of the Highway 9 area. I just don't see it as a controversial issue, and somehow it sounds.
Yeah, I mean, I agree.
Like it's a bigger deal than it is.
I don't think it's meant to be a controversial issue, but I think it's a large, global issue that's hard to define to any, either get it infinitesimal, or it's going to remain big. And I think that's the thing, is trying to get your arms around what exactly you're going to, to add to it, to help hone some of that stuff in.
And I guess, Bert, to your point, one thought would be that in the mixed use, in an area that's mixed use, at a minimum, to not limit it to just attached, but it could be attached or detached if it was within a mixed-use development. And again, guys, we've got an ARC kind of approach that's headed our way, so I would hope that we'd want to kind of be thinking about, how do we want that to potentially apply? Because the LCI and that grant with the ARC is all about mixed-use development. And so I would hope that as mixed-use development evolves, that we'd want development standards. I mean, that's the whole point.
And we need to think about redevelopment, too, not just the remaining parcels that are vacant.
Yeah, yeah. How can we define this?
Really, this is a philosophical change in, in how we have applied these overlay districts. And that's not bad, it just is going to be pretty different. We have, we, the city, has up to this point not included single-family residential detached, and I think that was by design. None of the overlays include that. You know, the closest we get are those mixed-use zoning districts. But frankly, I think it's really more of a philosophical change. If we choose to do that, that's fine. I think that that probably does need to go back through and have input from the Planning Commission and the Highway 9 Committee, particularly the Planning Commission, simply because this is, that's a different philosophy than they have heard before, and that's okay.
I'd love to clarify something.
Sure.
Because initially, where my discussion was, was in mixed-use development. So if I've got a mixed-use development, and it's mixed-use, commercial office and housing, most often that tends to be more dense housing development. It's not a traditional subdivision with a single-family home. I mean, it might be single-family, but it's a different product, if you will, than a subdivision that's being developed in a traditional sense. Does that make sense?
Sure.
And so in that environment, at a minimum, I was just suggesting, that in a mixed-use zoning district, you would, if it applies to an attached, why would it not also apply to a detached? And I don't see that as a different philosophy.
Let me break in, Julie, and I think, is this something that, you know, we could define into a mixed-use.
We could narrowly.
Area, that if, you know, if there is any non-residential in there, that it does apply to minimum rules?
And then separately, you know.
Ordinarily, you're probably not going to have a whole lot of single-family homes in an area like that.
Right. It's going to be the mixed-use component. Thank you, Mayor, for articulating that so well. And then Lynn, it would seem that the other, you know, could be, could be a philosophical discussion, separate from the mixed-use component, that maybe at a Planning Commission meeting or as we start to approach, you know, the LCI, that we start thinking about that? Because I think that what I was saying was taken out of context. I was really initially talking about mixed-use development within the Highway 9 area. There could be, and I think it would be worth looking at that future land use map to say, what other parcels, other than mixed use, could end up being residential? Maybe it's, you know, a product that's, doesn't apply to either one of those. And I don't know if we should look at that or not, but I think to not at least be thinking about it, would be a disservice to the folks that live along this corridor, so.
Is it possible for us to go ahead and get what is before us now approved, and then go back with this other stuff, so that we don't slow down the whole process?
Sure. Yeah, I could break that up and make that separate, because that is a new discussion anyway, so it's not going to affect that too much, I would say, I guess.
Bill, you want to comment?
I have some. I have some discussion points on section 64-1096, parking. And back in your discussion points on your executive summary. Parking seems to be a double-edged sword. I think we followed in the past the required, the formulas for required spaces for some of these developments. And one that comes to mind immediately is this one right around the corner, Target Cole's Development there. Parking areas like that, of course, I know they're, they contemplate future development of out parcels and taking that to account. But in reality, developments like that are big heat sinks. So you're, you're affecting the environment in that, in that capacity. And then the other capacity is, you know, it's so much impervious area out there, you're dealing with, you know, stormwater runoff and, and pollution and all. I'd like to see more thought put into more impervious type parking, hopefully to control or to aid in stormwater quality treatment, rather than dealing with the quantity aspect of it with these paved surfaces out here, number one. And secondly, like I say, it's a double-edged sword. You're dealing with an ample amount of parking in a development like this. And then last week, we were looking at Crab Apple where there's paucity of parking spaces, I guess. And you're going to have to go in and retrofit an area like that to accommodate some type of required, parking to accommodate future facilities down there. I, I think the, the formulas, getting back to that, that we've provided or mandated in the past, and go to your point on your, your summary up front, is calculating shared parking. And possibly down Crab Apple, we could use church parking spaces and obviously the school parking spaces like that. Up in this Highway 9 area with the, the school being developed up here, there's another opportunity for shared parking in whatever develops along Bethany. There's a Bethany Way or Bethany Bend up there. Any future development that comes in on the opposite side of Bethany Bend, I hope we could take into account the school parking facilities over there. I think this would go a long way to help not only stormwater quantity runoff, but hopefully quality too. And I understand the issues with, with pervious type parking too. It's accessibility aspect of accommodating those with disabilities.
Let me call your attention really quickly since you mentioned that to 1096B, which is a new section where anything more than the minimum required parking is required to be pervious parking. And that would include particularly, what we would encourage would be these, the outer, kind of the outer ring of parking areas to be pervious. And that way, you don't get, you know, just one or two parking spaces that are pervious, but a full row or a full lane that's pervious. So, like I said, if you want to put in more than the minimum that's required, you'll have to put in some pervious parking. So it's not really a parking cap, but it does require you to put some extra thought into how you want to design that parking because it's, you will have to put in pervious pavers.
Well, I noticed when I was at the Walmart in Midway yesterday that all of their ring parking is pervious, which is great. I mean, it's.
Yeah, a lot of folks are putting in this kind of their, their Christmas Eve overflow and their Black Friday overflow areas. They're putting those in as pervious and that seems to work out very well. In many cases, it can stay very green, very nice looking.
Notice we have an agenda item coming up here shortly on parking, Church on Cox Hopefully, we can adapt some of this newer thinking to developing near parking areas. Down in Article H, you called for a minimum of four bicycle racks for each non-residential development. How do you, how do you calculate that with, what is a development? Is it the entire similar development over here? Or is it this little office space, two-story down here on the south?
We've kind of done it per building. So for instance, if you've got a strip center, the strip center is required to have one bicycle rack. And what they've asked for here is to provide enough space for four bicycles to park at that rack. So we've done it per, on a kind of a per-building basis, so each of those strips per se would have a bicycle rack.
Now, that could also, you know, maybe you want to limit to a square footage, maybe every, you know, if a building's over 10,000, maybe per 10,000 square feet, you get one rack. And then if it's 20,000 or 30, you get two or three. That probably could be a simple way to address that of council. Wanted to do that, that makes sense, maybe making note of that.
The difference in the need for a 70,000 square foot store than a 4,000.
And, and you know what, I threw out 10,000 square feet, but you may have a better suggestion on that, so.
One thing we talked about in the Crab Apple discussions was the possibility of use of golf carts in a development like that. I don't know how you would allow for it in, in ordinance like this, but possibly setting separate section aside, the possibility of providing golf cart parking.
I think right now, they'd be considered a compact car, parking space. But yeah, yeah, there's, there's some ways that we could try to accommodate that.
Okay, good, good points, Bill. Julie, Alan?
Thanks, Julie. Couple of things, just an overall, just notice, have we gone through and reviewed the shalls and the shoulds and the musts? Because I'm looking at Section 64-1088B, if facilities are located above ground, they should be located? Is it the intent to make that a requirement?
Should is not a requirement.
Right.
Right, right. And there was a lot of discussion on that particular should and, yeah, and they came down to the point where because the least conspicuous area is not necessarily always the gravity-fed area and stormwater detention ponds depend on water running downhill, that sometimes they might have to be located in places where we don't particularly like them. But that's why it's considered a should versus a shall in that, on that specific point.
Can you articulate the, the architectural desire in addition to the engineering desire there? To me, that's just kind of a, we would like it to happen and you're, and, and I know the, I understand the gravity issue, but that's not what that says. If you could articulate that somehow, that, that, in other words, they shall be located in the least conspicuous area or be designed to create a natural look. And then you could put a caveat in there that, you know, if the, if the least conspicuous area is not one that is, I don't know, possible, or maybe based on gravity, then you get an exception or something.
Yeah, leave it as worded, let's say then, you know, based on, you know, engineering calculations and gravity or whatever, like, or, you know, maybe say, change it to shall, but then have a caveat on there that, you know.
Because what will happen is if someone comes to you and says, well, we don't want ours there. Well, it should go there because that is the best place and, and, and gravity feeds there. Well, we don't want it there because our, our, we want ours to be situated in such a way. Well, there's nothing we can do about it.
So shall may be subject only to engineering requirements?
Right.
But aren't most of these things come before us and we're site plan specific and we have at that time some authority to?
Yes, the only thing I would say, that they have a better argument against the council if it's a should to, to council member Tars' point, because you're right as well, you're going to have a lot to say so on the site plan, but I think.
Well, does, does the council have an issue with saying shall, but, you know, a, a statement on there, you know, as long as, you know, the engineering, I have to reword it different, but as long as the engineering works and that it's.
Yeah, that might really addresses two things. One is the location on the site, the other is this kind of a natural look versus the detention look. And so I think that they, they really wanted the shall to be for the natural look and it just, again, that was one of those things that they, they felt like they couldn't define as closely as necessary that would, that would allow us to require it as a shall.
So then why don't you make a paragraph C and say, if facilities are located above ground, they shall be designed to create a natural look? And then have a C, if facilities are located above ground, they shall be located in the least conspicuous area of the site, subject or something, and put your language in there about engineering, gravity.
Unless it won't physically, you know, physically wouldn't work.
Their struggle was with how to define that natural look.
Well, I'll just point to some of the suggestions that came from the Crab Apple Master Plan.
The best we can do is provide pictures of what we think it is.
But I mean, at least that way, it says at least there's an idea.
This is a topic that comes up in the state codes meetings frequently. And usually, there's a clause in a lot of these ordinances, states or as approved by the local building official or city engineer, which is kind of a catch-all for a lot of these issues of being required mandatory or discretionary. Is there a way we, similar way we can, we can cover that that gets away from us getting caught in this trap of being compulsory or discretionary?
I think we can.
You, you can. It's, it's sort of a blessing and a curse, though. As soon as you turn that over to a staff, are we prepared to live with the determination to staff? I mean, your point's a great one, I just, I see, I see the policy arguments go both ways. Then you put that monkey on the staff members' back, hope everybody's ready to cede them that authority because they will use it. And that's the development community figure out pretty quick. That's where we need to go then, because that staff member's empowered to make that call. But no, yes, the answer is yes.
Well, ultimately, it's the decision of council on anything that's controversial anyways.
Well, if they choose to disagree with staff's interpretation, sure.
Well, if an applicant disputes the decision of staff.
I think the concern is more you all disputing the decision.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're not wanting to throw it on.
Yeah, if the applicant disputed, they would just come to us.
As well, as long as we make a hundred percent.
Yeah, I don't know, decisions are, decisions are make a hundred percent of people happy, correct.
No, understanding goes both ways.
I've got a couple more things, Jim. So, so Ken, are you okay with, and instead of shall be provided, you're okay with is required?
Absolutely.
And are you okay with, instead of must, I mean, instead of shall, you're okay with must be provided? I'm looking in terms of must would be in Section 64-1089B. Any street furnitures, benches, trash receptacles or pedestrian streetlights installed in the mini area must be of the type indicated below or similar.
Yeah, yes, there is.
Okay. I'm a little confused with regard to Section 64-1092, screening and fencing, paragraph I versus J versus M. In I, it talks about fencing along public streets, shall be primarily dark-stained wood, blah, blah, blah. In L, it says, when required, fencing materials around detention ponds shall be fenced in grounds, blah, blah, blah. We've deleted any reference to vinyl-coated chain link fence. And then M, it says painted chain links, chain link fences are prohibited. Is it the intent that chain link fences at all shall be prohibited?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't get where saying that.
In K, it says they're acceptable, so.
Yeah, the only, the only place it would be acceptable would be around golf courses and play fields.
Okay, I don't see the connect, I don't, to me, M is pretty standalone and absolute to me.
These would be vinyl coated.
I don't see the connection between those.
There's a vinyl coated chain link versus the painted chain link.
And that's what they're calling for, the hundred green vinyl.
So really, in K, and I have a separate question on that, but if, I think I hear you saying that if it were to be allowed on the golf courses, it would be not painted, it would be.
Vinyl coated.
Green.
It just doesn't say that. I mean, maybe it does later, but.
It does.
It does.
You could insert, you could insert in front of chain link fencing, you could say, vinyl chain link fencing may be used along golf courses.
Okay, and in no case with painted chain link fences.
Right. But generally, the chain link you can see as being very much discouraged, particularly in that they're saying the exceptions are basically any of these public roads, main thoroughfares. You can't, if you can see it from any of those, then you can't use chain link.
Even if it's a golf course.
Even if it's a golf course.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's.
While we're on K there, don't interrupt Alan, but could we just change that Bethany Bend road to just Bethany Bend?
God.
Thank you, Bert.
That's my edit for the year.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else on this topic here? Julie, you had a question?
So the chain link, I think you clarified it. So the chain link fencing is only going to be if it's not visible from one of these main roads.
And I assume play fields include daycare center fields that are, because that's, I mean, that's really the main place that we have seen them in the past, has been daycare when they need something.
I need, I need that safety.
And is somewhere else, does it require that if that vinyl chain link fencing were in place, other than on one of these roads, that it would still have to be buffered with vegetation? Because I don't see that it says that here. If, if not, I would suggest that, because in other overlays, I know that in those few exceptions, that when it would be allowed, that you would still have to have vegetation in front of it to help buffer it.
Where is permitted?
Yeah, I'll have to look further into that. I don't know that it says that specifically.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I saw that anywhere. I think you would want to have it buffered with appropriate vegetation and landscaping.
Okay. Any other comments so far? All right, Lynn?
Let me ask something, if I can, I guess, at this point, because we've taken great comments, and that's the purpose of a work session. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out between now and next Monday, what, I want us all to be on the same page as to what we do between now and Monday, other than bring you the same ordinance again Monday and have the same discussion and we get through a long, drawn-out thing of who's going to add what during a motion.
Why don't I go through what I jotted down and I picked up from each person in comments that I feel like the council's pretty.
That'll help us shore the thing up.
And we may be able to give you guys some working points to adjust. Is everybody on board with, we add the non-residential areas and the mixed use, that we have released some simple standards on that, to Julie's point initially?
Residential areas.
You mean residential.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I mean, non, non, yeah, non-commercial. I mean, the residential, yeah.
Only in mixed use.
Only in mixed use.
Right.
So is everybody okay with that?
You clear on that, Chris?
That give you.
Repeat that, that's what we said.
Residential.
Because we said it every single way it was.
Just make sure you're clear. In a mixed.
In a mixed use.
The mixed use is covered attached and detached.
Which you normally probably wouldn't have that many, single.
Right. But so detached and attached.
In a mixed use.
Residential in a mixed use.
Yes.
Got it. That fronts Highway 9. Well, let me ask that, that is in the whole study area or that is visible from Highway 9?
We discussed, we talked about just the Highway 9 or major roads.
Some of those same roads that the chain link fence, where you can't see the chain link fence from.
Yes, perfect. Quick job, Bert, thank you.
Well, and part of it, yeah, too, wherever it's mixed use, so that. Well, and part of it, yeah, too, wherever it's mixed use, so that's going to somewhat limit it, so.
That'll work.
Okay, so we got that point, we're gonna.
I get, good.
All right, we're gonna use the.
What, what did you hear?
I heard.
Those fences, the, the.
Where the fence roads are.
Where the fence roads are, okay.
Where the chain link is permitted, so long as it's screened and so long as it's vinyl, we would have these attached to, attached and detached residential use in a mixed.
Like it.
Yeah, like it, got it.
You got it, and you may not want to word it that way in the ordinance, so that wherever there's, wherever there's a vinyl coated fence, but you got the point there.
All of them are on the play fields.
Okay. And then the next, the next thing was, we're going to clarify the bike racks to council member Lust's point, or maybe it was Thurman, I'm sure, but we talked about, you know, I think council member Lust, the number, so I threw out certain square footage, but whatever you guys think would be reasonable, we can discuss that. And then we talked about Alan with the wording of shall and must and having to do with the detention ponds and the engineering required, but that, you know, they should be in the, in the rear. And then also, we had another comment from council member Bailey about any way that the chain link fences are allowed, that they should be buffered by some landscape, and Lynn, I think you were going to look at those.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else?
I caught one in sixty-four.
Get rid of road after Bethany Bend.
Oh, yeah.
Sixty-four ten ninety landscape, council member Bailey recommended that we shore up potentially the five inch caliper in the deer field. In sixty-four ten ninety C, we call for a three inch caliper hardwood shade tree in landscape strip. Do we want to pair those together and make them both five? Are you good with?
I, I think it needs to be left up to the city arborist, because I think there are times that a, a five inch tree is not going to have near as, as great a chance of living as two, three inch trees.
I would agree with that, I've just seen that happen. A three inch is still a decent sized tree, and probably five years down the road, you'd never, it would be healthier and bigger than a, or the same size.
And just for the, I would have preferred to see it consistent, I think it's important on our streets, and again, I respect your opinions, again, especially after hearing some of the input from Lou Oliver's. We talk about how do you make an area more appealing, it's with larger streetscape trees, and I guess we're just going to ignore that input. I'd suggest that we try not to ignore that, even on the Highway Nine area. Obviously, I'm, I'm one of seven, and I respect your opinions, but I, I think sometimes it is okay to go with a larger caliber tree, and I think we do the area disservice when we don't do it. And if you look at the target area, we went in with smaller trees, and they're not looking too much bigger, and it's been a number of years.
Well, there were a lot of problems there, we shouldn't even open up that book.
What, what were the diameter of those trees?
Those two, or I don't even.
And I'll just tell you that we hear, I hear from citizens a lot that say it doesn't look good because they're not, you don't have streetscape, it's not going to happen in five years.
And my only, my only point is, you know, maybe if five versus a four, three may not be that big difference, but you're totally right as far as a larger tree, and it's going to make it look a whole lot better. But to the point of somebody that, you know, and I'm not a tree expert, the arborist could, you know, if you guys, we could kind of leave this one floating, but if you guys want to get some input from the arborist, and then the council, then the council can decide when we see it if, if we want to change that or not, but then that way you can have some input that.
That's what we have an arborist for.
Yeah.
One other point.
Go ahead, Bill.
Brought up golf carts, since ultimately, hopefully, we'll have a bike and pedestrian pathway system throughout the city, maybe some anecdotal reference to.
Turnover vehicles.
Providing golf cart spaces in lieu of regular automobile parking spaces.
Or maybe hold that in reserve or something.
Maybe have some, yeah, maybe get some kind of max credit if they do have. Julian?
I think another point we, and we may or may not be able to address it here now, but requiring a percentage of green space, I, I do believe that that's a missing component. Other overlays require a percentage, both in Crab Apple and in Birmingham, hopefully we will when we get to a one forty, but I don't see any required green space.
I think that was originally in that amenities section that we're still looking at, so I think that will come back to you as a second action.
At least as of tonight, we could say that, and I don't know if everybody else concurs, but I would hope that we would capture the fact that we'll look at that. And if, if I may, ask one quick question about parking. When, when Mr. Lo, council member Lust was talking about parking, and I couldn't agree more about shared parking, et cetera, under sixty-four eleven oh three, item three, it says at least one nine foot minimum landscape island shall be provided for every fifteen parking spaces. I would just ask for consideration, some of the other overlays actually break the parking up even more, so instead of having fifteen cars, I know that the overall, the Northwest Fulton overlay used to, and I don't want to misquote, but it wasn't fifteen, I want to say it was either ten or nine, so that you reduce the visual and you broke up that parking more.
Well, that increases your green space.
Well, so the only thing I was going to say is it takes away from, take away from your green space, your large green space. It's going to actually make that parking lot take up more room. It's going to have some spots of green space, but it's taking away from.
Can't have both.
The more visible, yeah.
But right now, we don't have the other, so without the other, I would say that we'd want to reduce this, on the hope and the chance that we're going to have required green space, I'm optimistic. If we don't, end up with a required percentage of green space, I think we need to look at this section about every fifteen spaces.
Okay.
Maybe that's one of those that we.
Yeah, that's something you can look at, and then if we maybe address it in the green space.
I just don't want to lose that thought, that if we don't get it there, but I would agree that the, the green space is more important overall.
Okay. Anything else? Will we give the, give you guys?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Somebody brought up the verbiage of the exposed neon lighting.
Yes, I did ask that question.
And I, I, what I had heard was, I think Lynn, you had said it applies to anything you can see. Do we, do we need the word exposed before then?
Simply because they do have a neon lighting that is basically behind the lettering, such that you're, it's indirect, that, that's out there as a product.
I mean, it's existing.
Not existing necessarily, I'm saying that the signs are the traditional ones that, that use that. They would use LEDs or neon that's actually behind the.
They're backlit signs.
They're backlit, basically, mhm. And that's, yeah, yeah, well, usually it's LEDs, but they're very similar.
Let me go on there.
I thought they banned those in Crab Apple.
I, I didn't say Crab Apple, but yeah.
So it's an internally lit sign, not to be confused with a more traditionally.
No, it'd be a backlit sign, but not necessarily internally lit, like a sign that, what you see basically is the light coming from around the letters, not through.
So exposed neon means you can see the neon tube.
Yeah, it's Wendy's, it's, yeah, it's Arby's, it's, yeah, the open neon tubing, typically making a graphic or a letter. Sometimes accenting an architectural feature.
So we, we're prohibiting those, and that just helps get clear, it's not opening up the door for things that citizens, if they didn't want, it's just clarifying, is that correct?
That actually answered my question.
Okay.
All right, so you guys have enough information to? Do you guys have enough information to?
Yes, sir.
Dress for next time, okay? Does City Clerk want to call the next item?
Next item is discussion of RZ eleven dash zero four, to men, chapter sixty-four, article eight, divisions one and two, off-street parking and loading. First presentation on April eleventh, two thousand and eleven, presented by Lynn Tully.
All right, again, this was brought based on the recommendations of the Highway Nine Committee and the Planning Commission. They had asked us to look at particularly the shared parking areas, the parking requirements, the minimum parking requirements, and some of the other requirements of the parking design, parking standards and design. So what we looked at included, and it looks like we have changed a bunch in here, because you'll see a lot of things that are redlined and, and deleted, but honestly, there aren't, because what happened was when we inserted a couple of new uses, moved everything down, so those same things are repeated a little further down, so. We did include some new use categories, including carryout-only restaurants, data centers, and libraries, in the hopes that we might have one.
Sometime soon, right?
Yes, but we did include some requirements for parking spaces for each of those, so we added those uses. I'm sorry. And we did reduce some of the retail, commercial requirements for parking in their minimums as well. Additionally, we looked at the calculation for shared parking and how it was currently being calculated. We compared that across a variety of different areas, both in Georgia and outside. Whether we like it or not, I know it's a little complicated, but it seems to be the traditional method for shared parking calculations, it seems to work, and so we're going to keep that. However, we are going to remove any of those references to MARTA and reduce any parking requirements that are within walking distance, basically from developments to a bus stop or other transit stop. So those are changed in here as well. That's kind of the gist of what you'll find in here. Like I said, not a huge amount of changes, although it does look like there's a lot of red. There really aren't that many changes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Thanks, Joe. We had an example not too long ago of a situation where there were the required number of parking lots on a plan that we were trying to be voting on, but it was obvious half those parking lots were unuseful, that they couldn't be used realistically. Is there any way we can address that kind of a problem so we don't deal with that again?
Yeah, I think we're, we're going to try to address it from a staff perspective on, on each and every individual site development plan, trying to encourage that shared parking as much as possible. And then also to, you know, when it is, you know, obviously unworkable, you know, request that they go back for variance, with a staff-supported variance, I mean, I think that's really going to be our best option.
On the first page, the second page.
Yes, sir.
You know, the ten, sixty-four fourteen ten, what is this last sentence? The bench seats shall consist of eighteen inches? I just don't see how that connects.
Second page.
On the very top.
Is it eighteen inches deep?
What does a bench seat have to do with a parking space?
That's true. Well, a bench seat of a car, if you have a truck or something, the bench seat.
I tried to get there.
Couldn't quite get it, see that.
Right on the, like it says, section sixty-four.
That's a very common catch.
Yeah, honestly, I'm not sure. Let me see if that's supposed to go in somewhere else. I don't know. I apologize, I'm not really sure.
I'm not as bad this time, but.
I think you threw it in there to see how smart we were.
Okay, I don't, I do not want to have that dialogue, Chris. Would you, hopefully, you're not going to.
What was that?
Would you like to repeat yourself?
Don't put that on the record.
I'll be happy to have him recall that later.
Good catch, Bert.
It's an existing.
I did do it.
I'm looking at, bringing it in there.
That is an existing, so don't miss, it's got to be moved somewhere.
I caught it when I read the existing ordinance a couple of weeks ago, too, but.
They go in a completely different area of the code, but don't lose it.
I did do a contract one time with AT.
Want to make sure a buck's going to put on that bet.
I did a contract one time with AT&T, and I put in there, just to see if they'd catch it, that if we didn't meet the, our performance with their dates and all, that, that the guys would not get ice cream at lunch, just to see if they ever caught it. That was our penalty, was no ice cream at lunch for the crew.
Oh, my.
Take it back to the last one.
Yeah, are we through with this one?
I have this one.
Button this, button this one up.
Lynn, under library, just at the library meeting last week, it seems, and maybe I'm recalling my facts incorrectly, but it seems to me that they talked about five spaces per thousand. I like the idea of having fewer parking spaces in all of our areas, I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a problem with our new library.
So they said five, we're saying three.
I thought they did, if we can just go back and check, just so that we're. But it doesn't mean that we also can't challenge their parking requirements and say, guys, is that what you show you typically need? We want to have enough, but five seems like a lot.
I think you're right, though, I think they said five.
I think they said five, and I think that Fulton County is just used to saying five, and as we often found, we'd never really needed five, so it would be a great way.
It'd be great for them to put in five and two of them be impervious, and two of them be pervious, yeah.
Because they can share.
Yeah.
Okay, I found out, just, just to let y'all know, Robin texted me really quickly. She says that the bench seating refers to fixed seats, for instance, in a pew or an assembly hall. So that's how you count the seating.
Nice job, Robin.
Thank you for catching it.
Thank you for that, Robin.
Okay, that makes sense, okay. All right, Chris, we'll go back to the last item.
Yeah, I do, and I was sitting here saying, gosh, do you ever want to bring this up? I think I do, because I would wonder tomorrow if I, if I didn't. Let's talk just a second more about exposed neon lights, because what the, I mean, it exists today in our sign code, and I don't know if our sign code's going to change. This would be another example, if we approve this overlay, that this is, I mean, at some point, I'm going to have to, I hate to say it, but at some point, I'm going to have to wage war on the open signs in the Highway Nine corridor, if every document that we adopt says that those signs are prohibited. And I know I've heard some discussion at some point that you, we, we can't say open sign, because that else it would become content-based, but I've heard several discussions where there has been some notion that we believe that that, that being able to display the fact that you're open for commerce is a good thing for a business, that people are trying to come in from a distance, and we could potentially craft something that doesn't say open signs are allowed, but that, you know, we would have to narrowly define it to say that, you know, a certain, a certain sign of no larger than two square feet within, you know, five feet of an entrance door, you know, we'd have to do something like that.
That's not blinking.
That's not blinking, right, we could put some.
Going like this.
I just want to, I guess, get the general feel, maybe y'all are good with the way it's written, and if you are, I, I just got to say that we're probably going to have to, I mean.
We're going to be getting a lot of letters from real businesses.
It's going to go on our list, and we're going to enforce the ordinance that exists, but.
We either have to enforce it or we have to change the ordinance so it's allowed.
That's right, that's right, because it doesn't do us any good to have ordinance that exists that we don't enforce, but I just wanted to be real honest with you, that's going to be one of those that, if we go out and enforce that in, in gusto, we'll make sure that's what y'all wants to do.
Well, hold it, wasn't there something in the ordinance about whether or not that the sign was permanently attached or whether it was tempered? In other words, most of these open signs, you buy them from staples, hang them on your door, they're not permanently attached.
No, I don't.
Well, they're considered, yeah, they're considered a window sign, so that's, that's probably the differentiator, not necessarily whether they're permanent or tempered.
But I remember having this discussion six months ago, and when we were talking about open signs, somebody called out the fact that those don't even qualify under the ordinance.
I don't know, I think they qualify.
Okay, well, maybe I'm misremembering, that's possible.
Under here, they'd be captured, irrespective.
So what, what, what are you suggesting, what?
I guess I'm just asking the million dollar question, is to, do you want us to put together some, do you want Ken and I to work on, and Ken, Lynn and I to work on some language that doesn't specifically, you know, relate to content-based sign, but that would give us some flexibility to allow not neon in, in mass quantities, but allow people to continue to put an open sign on when they show up to work?
I would support that.
We're thoroughly involved, let's go in and find in a standard open sign and carving out the specs for that.
Is that something you would try to do before our next meeting, or?
Yeah, yeah. It'd be fairly easy to do. But I understand, once we do that, you know, we can't control the message, so it may say open, or it may say pizza, or it may say Fred's, or.
Or it could say sex, I mean, you know, whatever, right? And I mean, I mean, go to the extreme. You need to go.
Hold it, how long does it take that we get there?
If you go from, oh, my.
I got it, this one's going to.
My point is that you can't, and that's exactly the reaction I wanted to get, as soon as you do it, you can't limit what it says.
But we can't limit what any sign says.
I'm confused, they could paint sex on their window today. I'm confused, they could paint sex on their window today.
But it wouldn't be a neon.
Neon means we mean it, well, I'm confused.
I think your point is that you can see it a little bit more boldly. I have two questions. One, what was the, we said that we, in many other cases, that we wanted to know what the two groups that saw this before they came here, what did the Highway Nine Design Group intend with the insertion? I assume that they did it with an express purpose, and the other is what did the Planning Commission have to say about it?
That was a question, she would be the one to answer that question.
Joe, my point, you don't, you don't need to look.
All right, it's okay, I overreacted, obviously. Okay, well, we're.
It made a point, didn't it?
We're at the point that Chris is right, this is going to come to us, one way or the other. They need to have some, you know, a direction. Does the council want, as Ken suggested, and Chris, we're talking about the open signs, to Julie's point, yeah, they could change them or whatever, I'm assuming you can limit to a certain size, that's the size that the open signs are, but does the council want them to look at that before next meeting, and we.
I have pictures of every open sign, neon sign on Highway Nine, if we want to, if you want me to take them out, and we can review them.
That's all right.
You sure?
Okay. But I've said, I'm okay with that, is anybody else? Anybody else okay with that, having them look at that and.
Yeah.
For next meeting, before we decide on this?
Yes.
Give us some suggestion.
And it would limit the number of those signs as well.
And, I mean, honestly, Steve, I think we've seen very few signs, other than ones that say open or closed, that are the neon signs, so if somebody is going to have only one neon sign, they're going to use it to say open.
As long as you limit the number.
Right. So I think limiting the number, limiting the size.
Then it's going to be a beer sign.
Are you in favor of that, Ken?
Yes.
Julie? Having them look at some options.
Len?
Yes, ma'am.
When, when that comes back, and it sounds like you guys want to look at options, in terms of what the Highway Nine Design Committee intended for that, as well as the Planning Commission, I'd like to know what discussion they had surrounding that.
Sure, but it does sound like Chris and Ken, that the council does want you to look at that.
We do.
And that would be just for the Highway Nine area?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Said just in one language.
That's it.
Contact.
Metaphonic. Okay. Can we move on to our next item, then, or we? Let's move on to our last item, let me talk.
Our final item is discussion of RZ eleven dash zero five, to men chapter sixty-four, article seventeen, section sixty-four dash two four five three, creation of a historic preservation commission. First presentation was on April eleventh, presented by Len Tully.
All right, this is the last one, should be fairly simple. This basically changes the terms for the Historic Preservation Commission to coincide with the appointing council members term. So we had what was the, kind of the state recommended three years, and some other verbiage in here. This basically makes those terms the same as all the other committees and commissions that we have in, in the city, that are, that are appointed seats, so this just creates that kind of consistency, and it allows for folks to roll on and roll off at a reasonable rate, so. Any questions?
Questions? Hearing none.
Great.
Bring it on.
Thank you.
All right, seven twenty-seven. Seven twenty-seven, that's not too bad.
No, that's good, you know, in preparation for next week, y'all, this is going to be a long meeting in a week from tonight, so.
It appears to be in there.
Which is fine, I want y'all to be prepared for a long meeting, so.
And I told you I will not be here.
Pretty comfortable.
That meeting, the first.
You can go.
Yeah, the first meeting in May.
You should sit on that mouse.
That should be a relevant. That's the Len Tully Show, I've already looked at the agendas.
All right, thanks, hope everybody is enjoying this nice weather.
I wish more than I get.